Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Present.
Present. Counsel Cahill absent. Counsel Capano?
Present.
Present. Counsel Chakoudas absent. Counsel Calucci?
Present.
Present. Counsel Seer?
Present.
Present. Counsel Apia?
Present.
Present. Counsel Lozey?
Present.
Present. Counsel Lynette?
Present.
Present. Counsel Trehant?
Present.
Present. Counsel Walsh?
Present.
Present.
I'll rise for a moment of silence.
Mr. President, a special prayer for the Aganis family.
Special prayer for the Clumex family, too.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Set the minutes.
So moved. Second.
Before we get started, I just want to say that Diana's husband, he's okay, but he was hurt in an accident today. So she's with him in Boston. And just want everybody's prayers and thoughts to be with her tonight. Communications.
We have two communications from the mayor. Dear counselors, I am hereby appointing Coco Allenson to the Lynn Cultural Council effective immediately. His term will expire December 31st, 2020. Sincerely, Judith Flanagan Kennedy, Mayor. Dear counselors, I hereby appoint Robert Muse to the Lynn Housing Authority Neighborhood Development Commission immediately. His term will expire May 25th, 2020. Sincerely, Judith Flanagan Kennedy, Mayor.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion made, seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Counsel Cahill absent. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Counsel Chakoudas absent. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Apia?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lynette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trehant?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Public hearings.
Public hearings. Okay, we have petition of River Street Business Park LLC for construction of a multi-use business center containing the following uses: auto repair, auto body shops, contractor's yard, retail store, fitness center, boat construction, maintenance and repair, general offices, and a builder's yard shop.
All those wishing to speak in favor, please state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Tom Demakis. I'm an attorney with the offices at 56 Central Avenue in Lynn. And with me is my client, the petitioner, Gerardo Raffaelli. This property is on the corner of River Street and Heath's Court. It's almost an acre in size. And Mr. Raffaelli is proposing building a multi-use business center very similar to the one that Nick Menino built at the old Lynn Lumber on Commercial Street, which I think everybody that has seen that and is familiar with that would agree is a great addition to the city of Lynn. This parcel, half of it is R2 and half of it is heavy industrial. And to be able to build it and put the uses in that Mr. Raffaelli wants to put in, which are similar to the uses that Mr. Menino put into his, we had to go to the Board of Appeals three weeks ago and get a variance. And because half the land is in heavy industrial, we have to come to you, fellas, to get a special permit. And that's why we're here tonight. So when I filed the petition for the special permit, I said that we wanted to build a multi-use business center containing the following uses: auto repair slash body shop, contractor's yard, retail store, fitness center, boat construction, maintenance and repair, general offices, and a builder's yard and shop. And Mr. Raffaelli had a couple of meetings with Counsel Capano and the neighbors. And the neighbors were, and Mr. Counsel Capano were against the body shop. So we dropped the body shop request at the Board of Appeals. And we're dropping it here tonight, too. We're not intending to put a body shop in there. And we're not asking for permission to put a body shop in there. We got the variance from the Board of Appeals, and they imposed four conditions on the variance. Number one, that there would be no cars parked in the street. Number two, that if an auto repair business goes into the center, that all repairs would be done inside the building, not outside. Number three, no body shop. And number four, Mr. Raffaelli's plan, as you can see, proposes extensive landscaping and that we would maintain the landscaping in accordance with the plan. So that's the size of it. And we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. All set?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name and your address, Calvin.
Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street in Lynn. Now, I've been in town since 17 years. And I'm one of the people, like a lot of my neighbors and citizens in town, that are not really into going to the dealer because we own older cars. And there's a couple of corridors in our city that are known for being one-stop shopping with the hodgepodge of auto repairs, shops, independent body shops, et cetera. And I've been dreaming for this exact sort of thing. And the fact that it's now a place for people that have talents that don't work for a big outfit, now they can come rent a stall or whatever. So, and I'm actually very happy because this is going to be the new Millennium Auto Repair Center because of the landscaping and the curb appeal that they've pledged. And I'm entirely in favor of this. I don't know all the details yet, but this has been a model whose time is overdue. And I'm in favor of this.
Thank you, Calvin. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none. Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none. What's the wish of the counsel? Counsel Capano?
Yes. I just want to say a couple of things. In full support of this project, we had a couple of neighborhood meetings over at the community room at the police station that Mr. Raffaelli attended. And it was a good meeting. And the stipulations that came out of those meetings are reflected in the Board of Appeals. I'd like to include those in the motion to grant. I just wanted to say, for any of, I know there's a big push in the city to get rid of the special permit process. And this particular example here is a good example of how the special permit process works and why it's important. Here is a business owner that wants to take an old dilapidated area of the city with broken glass and weeds. That's been, we've had proposals for two junkyards, which they call reclamation centers now, batting cages. You know, this is a really good project, especially when compared to what was proposed, had been proposed there in the past. We've never been able to make that connection that satisfied the neighbors. But getting back to the special permit process, we have an owner that contacted the counselor who set up a meeting, actually, two meetings with the neighbors to resolve any potential issues that they may have. You know, will there be problems in the future? Who knows? But we were able to solve them and get them here in a reasonable amount of time. So when we hear these criticisms of the special permit process and how it's chasing businesses out of the city, I just want to remind people that time and time again, we do have this process here that, especially in this case here where it worked. We actually had a vote of everybody in the room, and it was unanimous. So it was probably 20, 25 people there, you know. And, you know, you don't usually get that nowadays, but it's because of that give and take. It's not somebody coming in and just ramming it through by right without contacting the neighbors and satisfying some property owners, but not the neighborhood in general. So I just wanted to make that statement. I'd like to make a motion to grant with those stipulations.
Second.
Motion made, seconded with the stipulation that there be no body shop?
Yes. All the stipulations that were in the zone in Board of Appeal. No body shop, no parking in the street, auto repair be done inside the building, and all the landscaping that was proposed with his proposal.
Okay. Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Counsel Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm familiar with the area, too. I had some family that grew up in that area a little bit. And there's been a lot of proposals on that site that have come and gone. And this has been something that's positive for the neighborhood. You know, it's going to be a definite improvement to what's there. I just want to say that I support this project.
Counsel Trehant?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to speak on behalf of Mr. Raffaelli. He runs his business in my ward, so I know him quite well. He's always been a real good neighbor to all the neighbors. Anytime I've had a problem, gets right back to me, takes care of it. He's very charitable to the city. He does a lot of things. You know, like in the Christmas parade, I mean, you know, he does good things for the city. I'm sure that he'll be, you know, he's the kind of person that we want doing this development. So I just wanted to speak in favor of him. Thank you.
Counsel Trehant?
Ditto.
Ditto, ditto. Two ditto's are here. Third ditto?
Off of the vote.
Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill absent. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas absent. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Apia?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lynette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trehant?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Next public hearing.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Petition of Bruno's Bar and Burger, 858 Weston Ave. for a sign permit.
All those wishing to speak in favor, please state your name and your address, sir.
Good evening. My name is Paul Coleman. I am one of the proprietors of Bruno's Bar and Burger, 858 Weston Ave. We're looking to erect a sign on the side of the building, on the northerly side. Looking to do an LED sign, advertising, you know, hours of operation if we have any particular entertainment on a given evening, any specials that we may have, you know, all hopefully to capture more business. We have a lot of traffic. There's a lot of lights over there, which we're hoping that we can utilize that traffic and, you know, have people come in our establishment. We opened up in January. We've had some positive results. We have some challenges with parking. We don't have any parking. But we're hoping that the sign will, you know, let people know that we're there and, you know, try to get some more business for the city. I thank the council for hearing me tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else seeing none? All those in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing none? What's the wish of the counsel? Counsel Capano?
Yeah. Myself and Counsel Walsh went and met the new owners. This is a form of players. And, you know, the Bruno's after that, the new owners there, they're trying to make a go of it, and they want a nice new sign. I'd like to make a motion to grant.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill absent. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas absent. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Apia?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lynette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trehant?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Next public hearing.
There's a petition of Frank Peace, owner of Pie and Pint at 23 Central Ave., Unit 102, also known as 68 Central Square, for a restaurant with a full alcohol license.
All those wishing to speak in favor, please state your name and your address, sir.
Hi, Frank Peace, 23 Central Ave., owner of Brew on the Grid Artisanal Coffee Restaurant and owner of Pie and Pint, looking for a full liquor license in both of them.
Okay. Do we have to do these separate, or can we do them both? There's two of them there. Separate? Can we do them together? Separate? Okay. All right. So, do we wish to speak in favor, right?
Sure. Yes. Yes.
Okay. Y'all set?
Yep. Ready to roll. So opening up an artisanal pizza restaurant, Pie and Pint, which is based off of craft pizza. There'll be a casual dining area as well within the restaurant. You can take the pizza to go. Everything is handmade in-house. And we also will offer delivery service. The hours will be from 11:00 AM to probably 1:00 AM for Pie and Pint.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else? Seeing none? Anyone in opposition?
Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street. We've been watching this building morph for years, after years of languishing. And I can't wait to see the wrap come off. I've been hearing about these two new millennium again businesses that are going in. This is going to be state-of-the-art. It's just what the city needs. And I want to also go on record as some of the owners of 23 Central, excuse me, are looking at expanding and asking for a future reconfiguration of the little place where if you're coming out, you're trying to take a left to get to mail a letter. They're trying to bump that out to put some tables in there so we could do some true El Fresco in our downtown. So I'd be in favor of that, too. It's being talked about for some of the downtown study groups. But I'm in favor of this.
So that was in favor. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none? What's the wish of the counsel? Counsel Chakoudas isn't here. Mr. Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I spoke to Counsel Chakoudas, and I know that she's not here tonight. But she had asked me to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill absent. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas absent. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Apia?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lynette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trehant?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Next public hearing.
There's a petition of Frank Peace, owner of Brew on the Grid at 23 Central Ave., Unit 101, for a restaurant with a full alcohol license.
All those wishing to speak in favor, please state your name again, sir.
Frank Peace, 23 Central Ave., opening up Brew on the Grid, which is an artisanal coffee restaurant featuring craft-inspired food as well as craft coffee. We use all automated machines, so there's nothing, you know, it's really back to the roots of coffee. So high-quality coffee will open up at 6:00 AM and will stay open until probably about 11:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name, Calvin, and your address again, sir.
12 Concord Street, Calvin Anderson. Ditto on the last one.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else? Seeing none? That part of the hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition? What's the wish of the counsel? Counsel Walsh?
Thank you again, Mr. President. As I said, I spoke to Diana, who's, Ms. Chakoudas, who's not here. And she'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill absent. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas absent. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Apia?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lynette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trehant?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Next public hearing. You're all set. Thank you.
An ordinance amending-
Thanks very much. Look forward to doing business here. Thank you.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending the zone ordinance regarding food establishments in the city of Lynn.
All those wishing to speak in favor? All good. Please state your name and your address.
My name is James Moore. I'm an attorney in Lynn with practice at 85 Exchange Street. And I'm a resident of Lynn at 71 Bellevue Road in Lynn, Massachusetts. I'm here to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance. In connection with the development of the New Market Basket on Federal Street, the Department of Inspection Services informed Market Basket that the use of a portion of the store as a café requires a special permit under the city of Lynn zoning ordinance as a food service establishment. If the city council issues Market Basket a special permit, that special permit may generate an appeal, which would delay the opening of the café portion of the Market Basket perhaps for as long as two years. As an alternative, Market Basket asked that the city councilor propose an amendment to the city of Lynn zoning ordinance to allow large retailers to include a food service establishment as a matter of right in their stores. The proposed change in front of you is a result of that request. This change would not just benefit Market Basket, but would put the Lynn zoning ordinance in compliance with retail development as it exists in today's world, where in-house cafés of the retailer's products are common amenities. So I ask that you approve the ordinance establishing a food service establishment as it allows use of these circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Moore. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none? That part of the hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Real quick, Jeff.
I will, with no reply.
There was a fellow that came to a council meeting, and he said that they, he had proposed that they would have a, I'm trying to think of the word, holistic zoning, and that that would not be changed. I don't know if he left the council, but it was a young fellow that originally was part of the council. And I'm pretty sure, okay, that the whole board said, "We vote totally in favor of not changing the zoning at all." So if that were the case, that would mean that we would not be able to put a new thing of the future that he was referring to of food service inside a supermarket.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else? Seeing none? That part of the hearing is closed. We have a letter from the planning board that we'd like right into the minutes of the meeting.
The planning board met earlier and recommended adoption.
Okay. Counsel Walsh?
I'd like to ask a question of Attorney Moore for a second. So this is similar to like, like Kmart used to have a food establishment inside of the-
Yes. The, it actually goes back, Boroughs and Sam Barnes used to have a food establishment in their department store on Union Street. So the old is the old new, and the new is old. For example, lunch counters at McClellan's in Woolworths. Today, that would require a food service establishment. So it's new for a lot of retailers now to have cafés, but it's-
All right. Thank you. Make a motion to approve.
Motion made to approve.
Second.
Seconded. Roll call. Discussion, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill absent. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas absent. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Apia?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lynette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trehant?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Next public hearing.
Uh, that was that one. I was doing this one. Yeah, I did. Now we have an ordinance amending the zone ordinance regarding extending the central business district in the city of Lynn.
All those wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name, Attorney Moore?
My name is James Moore. I'm an attorney in Lynn, Massachusetts, at 85 Exchange Street. And I am a resident of 71 Bellevue Road in Ward 6, of course. As a result of a successful capital campaign, St. Mary's is undertaking an expansion of its campus by the addition of a large new wing at its main building on Tremont Street. The wing would extend from the middle of the rear of the main building on Tremont Street and occupy the area now occupied by the building used for chapel and development offices, commonly called the annex. The new building will result in a $13 million investment into downtown Lynn and would consist of classrooms devoted primarily to science and technology. As you know, educational uses such as St. Mary's are exempt from the dimensional and other provisions of zoning ordinances. But by extending the central business district to include St. Mary's, the proposed addition would comply with the city of Lynn ordinance. As there is a possibility of St. Mary's obtaining financing for the addition, the change in the zoning district to make a project comply would avoid legal and other costs needed to document the technical noncompliance with any dimensional requirements and the exemptions available to educational uses, especially with out-of-state sources of financing. This is the reason why St. Mary's asked that the city councilor to propose an amendment to the city of Lynn zoning ordinance extending the central business district to include the St. Mary's property. And I urge you to vote in favor of the extension of the central business district to include the St. Mary's property. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Moore. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name and your address, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jim Lyle. I reside at 225 Walnut Street in Lynn. I'm also a member of the Board of Trustees at St. Mary's High School. I just wanted to take a few minutes to express my thanks for the support that we've gotten in the community for the proposed addition. And we appreciate that the significant investment by St. Mary's in the archdiocese in the city of Lynn will be beneficial. So we would urge your affirming to vote for the zoning change. And again, we appreciate the support.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none? That part of the hearing closed. Anyone in opposition? Are you in opposition, Jeffrey?
Jeffrey, off of 500 E.S.S.I.X. Street, Department 16 in Lynn, Massachusetts. I would never, ever, ever take a chapel, a church, that teaches and come and share the love of God and replace it with a building where they want someone, God knows who, who wants to teach people how to build a nuclear power plant and bombs with technology. I would be very insulted. And I'm speaking for all of you. I don't believe anyone here would say, "I'd rather have a nuclear bomb built," and technology-
You're not talking about nuclear bombs, Jeff. Thank you.
I know. I'm just saying that science and technology will never replace "Come and share the love of God" in a beautiful church like St. Mary's and to take that building and make it into a science building.
Thank you.
So, thank you. And I'm going home because I was up very early this morning, guys. God love you all, and thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else in opposition? Anyone else in opposition? Anyone else in opposition? Seeing none? Counsel Walsh?
Thank you again, Mr. President. Again, spoke to Counsel Chakoudas, and she has asked to make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Discussion.
Stipulation, no nuclear bombs will be- I'll second that.
I'd also like to note that the planning board recommended adoption on this ordinance as well.
Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill absent. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas absent. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Apia?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lynette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trehant?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Before we go any further, I don't know how I forgot to mention this. Counsel Cahill is not with us tonight. He's also in Boston. He's up at the State House, budget hearings. So he can't be in two places, obviously, at the same time. So he sends his regrets. Public hearings to be set down.
Public hearings to be set down. Petition of All Day Convenience Store at 548 Summer Street for a beer and wine license. Petition of Market Basket for a sign permit at 40 Federal Street. And the petition of Fiesta Shows to hold a carnival at Keene Park from June 1st through June 4th with the setup beginning on May 29th. Hours will be Thursday and Friday, 5 to 11, and Saturday and Sunday, 1 to 11.
What's the wish of the counsel? Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes aye. Committee meetings. Utility committee.
It's unanimous vote of the committee to table.
Motion was made to table. Motion made to table.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public Safety and Public Health Committee. Counsel Barton?
Unanimous vote of the committee. Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I hear it was quite the meeting. Want to tell us about it?
We'll read about it.
Okay. Ways and Means Committee.
Unanimous vote of the committee, Mr. President. Motion to accept.
Second. Okay, we have to read all the...
Read them all together?
Okay. Motions.
Order that the city comptroller be authorized to take the following action. Transfer the sum of $48,899.86 from the reserve to fire payroll sick buyback retirees to fund fire department staff retirement payouts. Transfer the sum of $22,219.93 from the account of reserve to the police payroll slash longevity to fund the police department staff retirement payout. Transfer the sum of $12,400 from the account of reserve to the account of personnel expense to fund the assessment center held on January 23rd, 2017, to establish a civil service list for police chief. Transfer the sum of $26,060 from the account of parking payroll to reallocate funds to the care of dogs and abandoned vehicles. Transfer the sum of $220 from the account of state election funds to the city clerk expense to fund pre-employment physical for staff members not budgeted. Certify as an available fund the amount of $1,505,343.00 as allotted to the city of Lynn by the Transportation Bond Bill, Chapter 90 for FY18.
Motion made, seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill absent. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutas absent. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?